All right, we'll go ahead and open the meeting. Everybody, you will stand. And Steve, Commissioner Lanier will do our invocation.
Keep your heads. Heavenly Father, we ask that you look over our county employees. You look over the citizens of our county as always. We ask that you look over those families that were in the bombing today and protect them and look over those that were injured. Lord, we ask that you give us the power, strength, and courage to make good decisions tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Tadetini, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I just say welcome to everybody. And if you have a cell phone, if you wouldn't mind, put it on vibrate or turn it off, please. So at this time, we have a presentation by Shanna Wells, our code compliance for Yard of the Month.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. I'm here to present the Yard of the Month for September. This is the one of the landowners for that yard in Flora Vista. It's a beautiful home in Flora Vista. I hope you guys got to see the pictures. Absolutely beautiful, well-manicured lawn, terrifyingly cute guard dogs. And they also have some exotic critters in the side yard. They do have three fake giraffes, unfortunately, but it would be really cool if they were real. So I would just like to thank them for doing their part of keeping San Juan beautiful.
Okay. Thank you. Carmen, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I used to shop because I don't stay as much.
Okay, well.
It is still very nice, let me just say.
Okay, well, we're going to take a picture with you, so.
The giraffes are really cool.
They are.
All right, so next we'll go into the regular meeting and I'll need to get an approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and read this. Number one, consideration of approval of treasury check register for August 2022. Consideration of approval of finance check registers for August 22. Consideration of approval of resolution number 22-23-16 participation for County Road 6480 New Mexico DOT Transportation Project Fund Grant Agreement. Number four, consideration of approval of proposal number 22-23-01, Architectural Services San Juan County Industrial Park Renovations to Reynolds Ash and Associates of Durango, Colorado. Number five, consideration of for award of proposal number 22-23-02, Interinary Services San Juan County Coal Fired Electricity Generating Facility Demolition Remediation to Mountain West Consulting LLC of Surprise, Arizona. And number six, consideration of confirming Office of Natural Resource Trustee Gold King Mine Grant Application via Resolution number 22-23-13, 22-23-14, Do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to new business. And this is going to be Mr. Allen and Ms. Potter Consideration Proclamation declaring September 2022 as National Recovery Month. Welcome.
It's obviously a tall person. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So we appreciate you folks thinking about National Recovery Month and offering this proclamation to celebrate, which I believe is the 32nd Annual Recovery Month Celebration, which is September of each year. With your permission, Madam Chairman, I'd like to try to read the
Please do. Thank you.
The very wordy proclamation. San Juan County, New Mexico, a proclamation declaring September 2022 as National Recovery Month. Whereas, mental health and substance abuse disorders affect all communities nationwide. With commitment and support, those impacted can embark on a journey of improved health and overall wellness. Whereas, the focus of Recovery Month each September is to celebrate all people that make the journey of recovery possible by embracing the tagline, "Recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community." Recovery Month spreads the message that people can and do recover every day. Whereas, the impact of mental health and substance use disorders is apparent in our local community. And according to SAMSHA 2019, an estimated 9.5 million adults in the United States suffer from both any mental illness and substance use disorders. Whereas, through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health and substance abuse disorders and encourage people in the need of recovery services to seek help. Whereas, managing the effects of those conditions helps individuals achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. The Recovery Month observance comes to work to improve the lives of those affected by mental health and substance use disorders by raising awareness and educating communities about the effectiveness of services that are available. Now, therefore, the County of San Juan does hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as National Recovery Month and call upon our community to observe this month with compelling programs and events that support this year's observance, the 32nd Annual Anniversary of Recovery Month. So thank you for this consideration. And as I mentioned, nationally, in 2019, SAMSHA had done some data recovery and found that when you look at any mental illness in combination with substance use disorders, that it affects 9.5 million people in our nation. So keep in mind, there's a bigger number when we talk about mental illness and serial mental illness by itself and just recovery or substance abuse disorders by themselves. When we see those co-occurring disorders, it affects 9.5 million in our country and obviously a significant amount of people in San Juan County. So thank you for listening to me. But Gretchen Potter, our chairperson for Mental Health Task Force, couldn't be here today, so I'm presenting. And thank you on behalf of San Juan Safe Communities Initiative as well.
Well, thank you for being here today and reading that. And also, the 988 has gone into
It has, yes.
Suicide Prevention Hotline.
Right. So yeah, through Crisis and Access Line through the state of New Mexico. So yeah, 988 is that new kind of easy number to remember. You know, of course, the number used to be Call Access, which N M, which kind of became confusing because there was too many numbers. But it did actually direct people to the right place.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Obviously, it's really important.
It is. And one other thing I wanted to point out, you know, this is Recovery Month and typically we have a Recovery Month celebration. But because the city of Farmington was so tied up this year, we were trying to get, do an event at Brickside Park again. But because of other things going on during the month, we had to bump ours to October. So we are celebrating October 4th for our Recovery Month, delayed. And we're doing this at Bird Park from 4:00 PM until 7:00 PM. And we're doing this in conjunction with Farmington Police Department's National Night Out. So we'll have a bunch of booths that celebrate not only recovery, but you know, mental health in and of itself, but also having people who are helping us kind of do this. It's treatment court individuals who are volunteering to help us as well. We'll have a DJ that will highlight each of the booths as well and then throw some food at people, too.
October 4th.
Yes, sir.
4 to 7:00 PM.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have
I'd like to make a motion that we approve consideration of proclamation declaring September 2022 as National Recovery Month.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, so number two on our agenda, we have a report from San Juan Regional Medical Center on the Safety Net Care Pool funding for FY 2021. And we have Mr. John Mayer, CEO of San Juan Regional. Thank you for being with us.
Madam Chair, it's my pleasure. Commissioners, good afternoon. My report is for fiscal year, or sorry, yes, not fiscal year, rather, calendar year 2021. And it is for the Safety Care Pool Distribution Report. If we could advance a slide. I provided a little bit of history. The name of the program has changed in the recent years, statutorily. It used to be considered the Safety Net Care Pool Hospital Uncompensated Care Program. And now has a different component. It's called Hospital Access Payments and Targeted Access Payments. It's basically the same program, little bit different calculation on how the funds are awarded. But this is just a brief history on what the fund or how the fund has evolved over the last several years. And I will speak specifically to the payments. But one of the things for the Commission to understand is the targeted access payments are made by HSD themselves. And then there's a differentiation in the payments that are made through the targeted access payments as well. So that's included in the packet in terms of the detail. There are four components. One is embedded in our base Medicaid rate. That was roughly $50 million from the state this year. The second component is the TAP component, Targeted Access Payment. The third is, or the HAP, Hospital Access Payment. The fourth is the TAP payment. And then the last component is a quality payment that the state makes based on our quality attainment and metrics. In accordance with the 42 CFR, the MCOs are directed to make through HSD the Targeted Access Payment. And again, there's an upper limit. The upper limit represents what we get in our base rate Medicaid payments versus what Medicare would have otherwise paid. And it's the differentiation that they try and rationalize out with the funds that the state has available as raised through GRT and distributed to the Safety Net Hospitals that are participating. But it's based on utilization. Utilization is defined by Medicaid inpatient and outpatient discharges. It's how many people we see that participate in the Medicaid programs through San Juan Regional Medical Center. It's the Targeted Access Payment is then a rationalization that the state makes as it distributes based on what you should have made. And then they equitably distribute to the utilization hospitals that see the most members of Medicaid throughout the state. And that's how they normalize the payments. On the next slide, what we'll see is our 2021 receipts. We received roughly $15 million in the base rate component of SNCP. And these are the differentiated cash payments that come through Hospital Access Payments and then TAP for 2021. And those are the dates of receipt for the targeted, or the HAP payments. You'll see 1.149 million that was received in HAP. You'll see TAP recorded roughly $3.730 million. And then based on our attainment of quality measures and success, we received an additional $607,000 as the fourth component of the overall payment program. That is where we are that way. Lastly, we want to report on our charity and uncompensated care for fiscal year 2020 on each of those individual components. This is what the hospital renders in terms of monies that we don't receive any reimbursement. That's the value of the services provided without compensation. 2020, it was $27.1 million. And then there were some initiatives that came into play through the state and other agencies where we received enhanced payments, special enhanced payments outside of Safety Net Care Pool, just extra state funds in 2021, particularly the offset of COVID, where our funding went down to about $20.1 million. That's where we stand in our deliverable back to the County Commission for where we are relative to your collection of the 1/12 GRT components of funding and what we receive back here locally. I'll stand for questions, ma'am.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, just for your benefit, you know, and you probably saw in your staff summary, you know, in 2014, the state legislature created the Safety Net Care Pool Fund. With the exception of Bernalillo County, you know, all counties contribute a 1/12 of 1% gross receipts tax contribution to the state. And so we do that. It's annually in the roughly $2.4 million range. There was a point in time with the program based upon how funding is distributed for a number of beds. You know, obviously, the program was more geared towards assisting the smaller hospitals in the state. Smaller being, John helped me out at less than 50 beds.
Correct, yes.
So the tiers are 50, 50 up to 100, 150. And you're under the 200.
We're under the 200 tier with 198 licensed beds.
And so the 2.4 million, you know, we always want to make certain that, you know, we're getting a good return on investment. And as Mr. Mayor shared, 2.4 million being contributed is returning back to the hospital for a total amount of, I forget your slide there.
A total amount of 15 plus the 3 plus the 6, 50. So we're in excess of almost $18 million at this point in time. So, and it's based on utilization, which is a thoughtful way to distribute the funding. So it's not based on beds necessarily. It's throughput utilization through the facilities that support New Mexicans.
So I just wanted to share that with you because that's part of the purpose for this report that's provided annually to you is to be able to compare what's being contributed and sent down to the coffers in San Juan and what's being distributed back through those Safety Net Care Pools.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is consideration of donation of the Worfino Substation to the Navajo Nation. And Mr. Stark.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. San Juan County and the Navajo Nation entered into a 10-year lease agreement on March 26th of 2009, which allowed the Navajo Nation Division of Public Safety to utilize the substation constructed by San Juan County near Worfino for the purpose of providing enhanced law enforcement protection in the checkerboard area of San Juan County. That agreement really was never fully utilized to its fullest extent. And subsequently, we had Navajo Nation Division of Public Safety approach the County Commission December 3rd of 2019. So here just recently, or well, three years ago, to extend the lease, because the lease had expired, extend the lease another 10 years to the Navajo Nation for use of the facility as a public safety answering point, PSAP, Dispatch Center, very similar to what we have down the street here in the 911 Communications Authority, to answer emergency calls for police, fire, and ambulance services within the Shiprock Police District and also as a backup PSAP for the Crown Point Police District. So recently, the Navajo Nation Police Department approached myself and the sheriff about expansion and modification to the existing facility since it's owned by us and under that lease agreement. So that would take, you know, any modifications to the building would require approval by the County Commission. During that conversation, it became evident that, you know, the Navajo Nation Police Department would like to make the Worfino Substation a permanent PSAP location, which would enhance public safety operations and police presence in the checkerboard area for many years to come, which is really the old ten of constructing this facility back in 2008. So given their long-term commitment to the facility and the area, County Staff is proposing to you a donation of the property to the Navajo Nation in exchange for the law enforcement, additional law enforcement presence and service that would be provided both directly and indirectly due to the use of the facility as a PSAP. And we do have a letter in your packet that was submitted to us by Chief of Police, Chief Noon, who is today, to request such a donation. So that's part of what we're bringing to you today was that request from the Navajo Nation. So that, you know, what we feel like is the benefit to the citizens and having that law enforcement presence also plus the alleviation of some of the long-term capital upgrades of major building systems that we ultimately would be responsible for if we continued in ownership. You know, the annual building insurance, et cetera. That's about $1,500 a year. It's not a lot of money, but it's still funding that we outlay to be able to maintain that building in the lease agreement as is. We did have the building valued, so we'd know if you all were to consider doing this, what does it mean in terms of valuation? And thanks to our county assessor, who was able to quickly value the building, the current valuation of $314,902. You might also ask, well, how much did we spend to construct the facility back in 2008? And that was approximately $550,000. The building has a little grease and evaluation over time. Also want to note, if such a donation is desired by the Commission, given we have a 60, or we have a lease agreement currently in place and there's a 60-day termination provision, our suggestion would be that we would provide notice of the, through the lease agreement, of appropriate termination of the lease and then subsequently provide a notice that a quick claim deed would be forthcoming upon satisfying that 60-day window. So with that, I just want to note that we do have Chief Noon here as well as Sheriff Ferrari. And certainly could, if you all wanted to gather more information from them on the current use of the facility, the future use of the facility, and also whether or not the sheriff's office long-term has a need or use for this facility. They're here to answer any questions you might have.
If you don't mind, if you'd step up. Welcome.
Hey. Well, I guess I could start out. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, we are in full support of this. This has been a project that's been going for three years. Initially, we put our support behind this because we do understand the lack of law enforcement that we do have in our checkerboard areas south of Bloomfield. We also fully recognize being that we do still respond to some calls down there and along with the highway, some of the communications issues that we've had. I think this is a great opportunity. There's not a lot of opportunity for us to really help out our partners with the Navajo Nation. I think this is a phenomenal opportunity for us not only to help those citizens south of Bloomfield, but also the Navajo Nation. I will say it time and time again that our Navajo Nation police officers, some of the bravest police officers in the United States. They are one riot, one ranger, sometimes covering hundreds of square miles on their own. One thing they severely lack across the reservation is communication. So if we can do our part here in San Juan County to assist not only the citizens, but the safety of those officers, I'm in full support of. So again, we are not going to need that building. This building is, the original conception of this building was to have a substation down there. Unfortunately, it never came to fruition. We've had multiple trailers down there, multiple deputies staying there. It's been problematic. It's been difficult also on the county just as far as maintenance on having a building that far off-site from some of our other facilities. So I think in a business sense, this is good for us to allow that building to be used in its original capacity. But on top of that, being able to better serve our citizens south of Bloomfield and our Navajo Nation brothers and sisters in law enforcement, where we're proud to be a part of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chief Noon?
Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Gerald Noon. I'm the Chief of Police for the Navajo Police Department. Just to give you a little background on me, I took over this position in January. And I joined the Navajo Police Department in January of 2019. Before that, I retired after 23 and a half years with the Farmington Police Department as a deputy chief. And, you know, the relationship that I have with San Juan County, it's already, it's been in existence, you know. And so I know and I appreciate, especially now in this position that I am, I'm in, you know, all the help that we get from San Juan County. And I wasn't a part of this initial plan, this initial lease. But hearing from our communities on Navajo, I mean, it's something that is needed across Navajo. The benefit of this place is it exists. We have a structure in place where in the other locations we have to build. And, you know, I understand that I hear all the complaints. I hear all the concerns. I'm not here to make excuses. I think it's, this is a good opportunity for us to uphold our end of the deal here and take care of, you know, the citizens that are in our county on Navajo. And I just want to extend my appreciation to Sheriff and San Juan County Fire for just the years of partnership that we've had with them. I know it hasn't always been good. But I think we're in a position now to actually create these conditions where we can actually occupy the building. Because we know that the 550 corridor is, it doesn't get enough attention, that, you know, the attention that it should. And this would really help us in developing a substation. I mean, it obviously was designed for, to become a dispatch center. But, you know, with some of the, so how this came about was, you know, we were running with this idea and this plan to create this dispatch center. And we fell short on some of the funding and then COVID hit. And so now, of course, ARPA is coming in to save the day. But, you know, we, one of the unique problems that I have is although ARPA is there, I've never been in a position where I have money, but I can't spend it because of all the red tape that's associated with it. And so what we're looking at is we have some money to finish the project and create a consolidated center, but we need a little bit more room. And so that was, that sparked the conversation. Hey, can we knock down some walls and make this reality? And but when I was approached with this, I, it was exciting for me. You know, we have officers actually identified already that are interested in manning this post because they live in Rio Rancho. And I'm just very thankful for the opportunity. And it's a privilege for me to be here in front of you all. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. So forward to more to come, everything that's happening. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, Chief Noon, what will this do for your response time? Will it help out with your response time?
Yes, I mean, just, it will. Once we get, so what we have now, you know, with COVID, we ended up losing people. You know, they were worried about the disease and then how it would affect. Because we have a lot of officers on our staff that are tenured. They've been there for years and years. And, you know, when COVID hit, it scared a lot of people. And we actually lost an officer. So we had a lot of retirements. So we are in the process of building or staffing those back up. And but just having a presence there would shorten the response time. I mean, it's still not going to be what, you know, I took for granted in Farmington, but it's going to be a lot better than what it is.
So does that mean that they'll be patrolling or responding to calls or how does that work?
Well, initially, what we had planned was the Shiprock and the Crown Point District were going to share responsibility for the middle portion of the districts, the eastern side of Navajo. So they would both contribute personnel. And so this actually would work for us. We have a building that they can operate as a substation. So we would have a team up here with one or two sergeants and some patrol officers. So, yeah, they would be out there patrolling.
Thank you. Your question?
Chief Noon, Commissioner Lanier, and I are retired teachers. And I sponsored the class of 1990. And he was one of my students. So it's always nice to have, you know, how our influence goes to the students that we teach. And so I'm so glad that now Navajo Nation gave you the big responsibility as Chief of Law Enforcement over there. And, uh, and I'm glad that you work with our sheriff. I, I think that collaboration is really wonderful. And with that, I'd like to move for approval for this consideration of the donation of the Werfino Substation to the Navajo Nation.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. I have our first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This is where you say who your favorite teacher was.
What class did he have to work? Teaching that?
He was in my foods and nutrition class.
Were you a cook?
Yeah, he's a good cook.
All right. So now we have a presentation regarding the homeless solution draft strategy framework from Lisa Gomez. Hi, Lisa.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Also joining us online is Jeff Kylie, our consultant. And, um, we'll just dive right in. So this is an overview. There's been a lot of work done. So if we go too fast, if you have questions, just stop me. So just to remind you a little bit of background, several years ago, the commission approved funding, um, to do an assessment of behavioral health services or lack of services, um, in the county. And as a result, um, the 2019 San Juan County Behavioral Health Gap Analysis Report was published and presented to the commission at that time. The report, um, identified five key gap areas, along with options for opportunities to strengthen the behavioral health system. Job number one, or the primary opportunity for the county was to be a collaborator, a coordinator, uh, an alignment vehicle for the response to the needs and gaps in the community. The issue of home homelessness was one of the first issues addressed in a comprehensive strategic planning process. Over the, oh, let me see if I got these mixed up. Good. Uh, over the last couple of years, county staff, along with our consultant Jeff Kylie, conducted more than 20 meetings with agencies, providers, stakeholders, as well as numerous internal staff strategy sessions. What you see here on the screen is, um, the action planning template that was developed to address each gap area. And Jeff, feel free to, um, chime in whenever, wherever you feel the, the need.
We're back.
In the 2019 Gap Analysis Report, um, there were specific gaps identified for the homeless area and solution options we might want to consider as action strategies. So out of these, uh, stakeholder meetings over the two-year period, um, the mission and vision became focused and clarified, including a very bold vision statement. The vision was, is, end the tragedy of homelessness in our time. And so all this work and, um, coordination and meetings and, um, everyone's feedback, everyone understands that to achieve the vision, it's going to take a lot of time and resources and commitment. In addition, the two-year process with stakeholders and with the help of Mr. Kylie, a skeleton strategy framework document was developed. This, along with feedback from the conference, the conference was held, um, in April, which we'll address in this next slide, um, a, a unified collaborative system was envisioned. So it seems that there are three big areas. Home, home, housing options, um, which is how do we house people? How do we shelter them? And then service options, how do we provide supports, um, that will help, uh, move individuals from homelessness to self-reliance? And the third, uh, center area were, is investments. Investments are the areas that are needed to expand and strengthen housing programs. So this unified collaborative system is meant to support and coordinate the existing programs and services and, um, expand new services. So with the keynote kickoff address by our Chair, Terry Portner, um, the conference brought a diverse gathering of more than 60 stakeholders into, into an interactive workshop-style process with breakout groups. The breakout groups was very powerful and provided for really insightful feedback to the kinds of action steps and solutions needed to make an impact on the problem of homelessness. Again, the workshop was held April 12th, 2022. So Jeff, do you want to step into, um, the next slide on step two?
Mr. Kylie, are you there? Are you unmuted? He's there.
Okay.
Jeff, are you unmuted?
I can just give an overview. If he is able to come on, you can give some additional valuable, uh, feedback here. So the next, step two, um, is, um, well, we'll just go to the next slide because this really helps. Step two really is developing the core group, which really was identified. There are people stepped forward. Um, the core group is at least one individual from each of the work groups. So each of the work groups are, um, the colored boxes on the outside and there's a facilitator for each of the work groups, um, are members of the core group.
Commissioner Sullivan, what was that?
No, I, I didn't have anything.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Um, so the next slide, please. This is a workgroup task template that was developed, um, by Mr. Kylie and based on feedback, um, from the strategy workgroups. It really is going to help focus, um, each of the meetings. So the set, the way the meetings will be held is the workgroups will meet monthly and the facilitator for each of the workgroups will report back to the core group and that's how the collaboration and coordination will take place. So next steps, um, we want to move toward a, um, a full convening of a behavioral health summit with homelessness is one of the five gaps identified. But the next steps for this small piece, um, we're, can, we did convene the core group. We had our first meeting on September the 14th. We have a target date to do, conduct an orientation, uh, collaboration work session with workgroup facilitators and we are inviting workgroup members of the workgroups to this, um, orientation. And then after that, each of the workgroups will convene separately. So it's, it's going to be, um, kind of a, a, a complicated, um, coordination effort, but I think it surely can be done and everyone's committed to, um, commit with some solutions. Again, we'll have monthly check, uh, check-ins. We're, we're using the CHAP meetings, um, which is a homelessness, um, meetings of various agencies that already meet on a monthly basis. Um, we're utilizing that so we don't add extra meetings, um, every month. Our goal is to use the lessons learned in this homelessness process, um, to convene on the rest of the gap area, um, meetings, um, to, to lead up to the, a behavioral health summit, summit. So that's a really short overview. I don't know if Jeff was able to join us and add any comments, but I welcome any questions you may have.
So in there, you're going to have a, a summit, you said, that's going to take all this information and, uh, give it to those in attendance?
Madam Chair, um, so the summit will include all five gap areas, you know, mental health, behavioral health, um, education and homelessness is one of the five gap areas. The, the goal really is to come to some solutions and working groups before we get to the summit. So the summit is, we have some announcements and things in the works already. So it brings everything together so we can kind of launch into the strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I've been reading the newspapers and I guess, um, Albuquerque and Gallup, McKinley County, they're dealing with the same thing, how to address the homelessness. And I know, uh, I mean, people are trying to earn money, but then their rents are really, really high. And so I, I've seen like in college campuses, uh, students and, and, uh, architectural programs and they're trying to build like those little houses, at least somebody who is alone and homeless, they can, uh, uh, live in, in a shelter like that. But it is, uh, I guess a huge problem, you know, when people are out of work and, or like just recently, um, a friend of mine, um, the, her, her granddaughter and her family, they ended up homeless. I mean, I, I don't know why, if they were evicted or something happened and so they moved and back with her over on the, on the Navajo Nation. So you see a lot of that with families, you know, having, especially if your grandparents or your elders, you end up taking in your grandkids, you know, and giving them shelter. But it is a huge, huge problem and I hope we can find some kind of a solution, uh, solution. Uh, I think what's, uh, educators are really, uh, they're aware of the students who come and some of them are, were living with their parents and vehicles. And I think that's, that's really, uh, shocking and also a tragedy that, to see children having to work like that. But I'm glad that, you know, this is, uh, you're, you're really, uh, focusing on solutions. I mean, it won't be easy and, but I, I, I think it's wonderful.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Toregini, I appreciate those comments and, um, what we see at MWRC, um, probably 90% of folks coming in, whether they are looking for substance abuse options, resources or mental health, they always need housing in addition to. So housing is a huge issue. There's not a lot of, um, resources up there. There are, but there aren't. I mean, there's, we've got some, a great programmers, you see housing vouchers and there's not a lot of, not enough rentals to, to, you know, vacancies to address, um, for people to use their vouchers. We have people with children with special needs that can't go into path or can't find an apartment and kind of are stuck in the middle. There's a lot of really tragic stories that we see every day.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, um, Commissioners, um, Lisa, I think it's worthy of noting that, you know, as the commission director to pay more attention to, you know, behavioral health, um, through the gap analysis and of course, the work that Lisa and Mr. Kylie have done with coordinating, uh, this effort regarding homelessness. And we've had some wins along the way. For example, uh, we now have in San Juan County, a year-round emergency housing solution that I, I think is worthy of, of, of everybody celebrating, uh, because that didn't exist prior to more attention being focused in this area. The city of Farmington, uh, has historically funded the roof, um, during the winter months. That was for five months and, uh, we were the recipient, as you know, of the Behavioral Health Investment Zone Grant. And we were able to allocate some funding last year, um, to, to, along with some county healthcare assistance program funding to add another five months. And then Presbyterian Medical Services, who operates, uh, that facility out at the Tota Behavioral Health Campus, um, contributed two months, um, services provided, um, you know, funding provided by them for, for, for direct services. So now we have that solution in our community that didn't exist prior to the county commission wanting to look at the gaps in our community. So although there's still a lot of work that needs to be done and we're not going to probably solve every problem, but certainly we've already had some significant wins and being able to have a solution, at least on an emergency temporary basis. It's not permanent housing, but, but at least that's available to our community and those that, you know, struggle to, to, to stay housed. And Lisa, if there's anything else you want to add, please do.
I would. Mike, okay. I just really quick, Mike, Mike does not ex, you know, explain or express what a big deal it really is to have a year-round temporary shelter, especially in the winter, you know, on the freezing cold. It's, it's a really big deal. Just area agencies, mental health agencies, behavioral health agencies, um, that we work with just were ecstatic. So it's a small, small thing, but a big deal. So I just want to stress that it's a really big deal. So, um, Jeff, I didn't know if you had caught any of that, if you wanted to add any comments?
Thank you, Lisa. My internet connection went down, um, for about 10 minutes there. Very sorry about that. One thing that I just wanted to say is that I really appreciate the leadership and support of, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Portner, who gave us a great kickoff at the April Conference and really helped set the tone and, uh, set a vision for everybody in the conference. That conference in April was absolutely excellent, had very high level of participation, tons of input. And that's why Lisa and I have talked about the potential value of, of a summit going forward that brings all the behavioral health themes together. So that's my, my main thought at this time, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie. I appreciate your words and everything that you and Lisa have done to keep this going forward. So did you have anything else to add to that or?
No, just that's our report and update. And so we invite you to reach out if you want to get involved, if you want to come to a meeting, if you want to come visit, have coffee. We got coffee.
All right. Thank you very much for that report and all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have, uh, consideration to order county assessor to impose 2022 property tax rates. And this is Ms. Martin. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commission. Well, it's that time of year again to come before you, um, to ask for your consideration to, um, authorize the, um, assessor to impose the FY 20, or not FY, excuse me, the tax year 2022 mill rates. So, um, before you is the presentation, so I'll just kind of walk through it and just kind of to let you know that, um, I have received all of the validations back from all of the entities, um, confirming that they are in agreement with the mill rates that, for each of their, um, areas or districts, I guess I should say. And, uh, the, I did find out what the answer was to your question. I did reach out to, uh, County Treasurer Paulby and she helped me. So what it is for the in, that's within the city limits and the out is outside of the city limits. And the, um, the non-residential is primarily, uh, imposed against commercial and agricultural, whereas the residential is based on homes or peaceful, personal, personal property.
Okay. Thank you. And that was on the, uh, thing that you gave us, the spreadsheet. thing that you gave us, the spreadsheet.
Yes.
That had the eye in the.
Yeah. So hopefully that provides a little bit better clarification.
Thank you.
So first slide, the statutory authority requirements. New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration sets the rates for us, and they send out their certificate of property tax rates. Whenever I receive that, I have to send it out to all of the entities. And then I also review the rates and put it into the yield control that is provided by the state so that I can verify that it's calculating out to what we believe it is. During this process, we did find that the city of Aztec had an extra section added to their schools. And Assessor Florida was able to reach out to the state and get that issue corrected. And then whenever I was trying to calculate the county rates, there was an error. And so we were able to work with the the state and got that corrected. So the rates that are before you are correct, and I feel very confident in them. The county commission issues the delivery, issues and delivers its own written order to the county assessor, which will allow them to impose the rates and then push it over to the treasurer's office for them to be able to generate the tax bills. The county assessor shall prepare and deliver the property tax schedule to the county treasurer by October 1st of each year. And the county treasurer shall mail all tax bills no later than November 1st of each tax year. Typically, we do have five days that we have to get this completed. However, the state let us go until September 23rd. I do believe it's because they moved into a new system, the LGBMS system. And so this was the first year that it was generated by a computer. Historically, they've just used an Excel spreadsheet. So so I think that that's why I'm not, I don't think that it's going to be year after year. But at least this year, it gave us a little bit of reprieve and able to really evaluate the mills rates and make sure that they were accurate. Components of property tax, a combination of different taxing authorities who can issue the tax rate is the state of New Mexico, San Juan County municipalities, school districts, and higher education, which is comprised of San Juan College. Tax set by the taxing authority subject to the change due to the yield control statute. And that yield control does help keep things from, you know, having huge swings, going really high or coming down really low. It it limits the revenue yields that results when property values are increased due to reassessment. The yield control is applied separately to both the residential and the non-residential properties. And the yield control does not apply to any debt service that entities may have. The yield control statute considers growth control factors. So this year, the state, the state sets that inflation factor, and it was set at 5%. They also give us a a formula that we can plug it in, and it originally calculated out at, I think, just over 7%. And due to the the statute, it caps at 5%. So the max we were able to compensate for the inflation was 5%. New construction, first year property tax value that is added to the tax base is not subject to yield control in the first year due to the cost of providing infrastructure and public services to the newly constructed area. This year, we had point nine nine seven growth of residential tax base as a result of new construction in San Juan County. So San Juan County's eight point five mils imposed remains the second lowest mill rate in the in the state for FY, or I keep saying FY for fiscal year, sorry, tax year 2021. So the increase for residential for San Juan County is point one oh eight mils. Last year, we were at seven point oh three three, and this year, we've increased to seven point one four one. And that's comprised of the 5% inflation factor that I just spoke about, the point nine nine seven new construction, and then we subtract out the valuation increase of the 4.462, which gives us the 1.535 increase. So.
Do you know how they come to the 5%?
I think what they do is there's a website out there, and I can't, I'm sorry, I think it's the U.S. Bureau of Economics where they they get what the CPI is, and they plug it into a formula. And whenever it calculates out, it came out to seven point, I think it was 7.3% increase in for inflation. Now, the statute caps it at 5%. So since it was over, based on that calculation, the state just capped it at the 5% per the statute. So we didn't see the uptick of 7%, we capped at the 5%.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Our non-residential rate remains at 8.5 mils for FY 22 tax year. I keep saying FY, sorry, tax year. My my financial stuff is coming out. The next several slides will be graphs to provide a visual comparison of the various tax values. This one here just shows you between the comparison between 21 and 22. And as you can see, you know, residential is is kind of holding steady. Non-residential, you know, no really big swings. Oil and gas production is up, and it's due to us seeing a a large increase last year in oil production. And then the equipment is based on the prior year's production. So we'll probably see that come up a little bit as well. The next slide is the net taxable value, 10-year comparison. So here you can just, it just gives you a visual of, you know, you can see how it continues to go up for residential. It's just kind of been a steady trend. Non-residential has kind of had a few peaks and valleys, but not a lot. And then oil and gas is just very volatile, which we've already, you know, that's why we don't rely on it as a as a revenue source, a recurring revenue sources because of the volatility of that. The net taxable values. Over a three-year span, there has been a slight increase in residential values with the city of Farmington seeing the largest increase, but it's just been, you know, just a gradual increase. It's not like the yield control helps keeping, helps keep it from having huge swings. So the yield control is doing its job in trying to minimize the impact on residents. The oil and gas assessed values, this slide again shows how volatile it's been just being, you know, go and, you know, in FY 2020, you know, it was, you know, and then you can see where it dipped down in 21, and then it came really back strong in 22. So I think it's just due to the more production of oil and gas in our area. The next slide is a comparison of mill rates. This shows how the yield control helps prevent major swings in the tax rates and based on residential versus non-residential. So you can kind of just see across the board how that all flows through. This slide reflects, the next slide reflects the tax rates by entity. So you can kind of see where, you know, the state of New Mexico has been holding at the 1.36 mil rate. And then, you know, you can just kind of see the various, how, you know, each entity is being charged. The estimated property tax payment, this is based on $150,000 home, which the assessed value would be 50,000. So for, if you live in the city of Farmington, you're going to see about a $9.55 increase in your tax bill in in 2022 due to the slight increase in their mill rate. City of Aztec will see approximately $9.30 increase in their tax rate. So it's very minimal. So there's, the yield control, like I said, is doing its job in trying to keep those huge swings from impacting the residents too much. But, you know, it's just kind of the sign of the times, I guess. The next sheet is, shows us how many mills, the maximum mills allowed per the county is 11.85 mils. Our total rate imposed at the at this time is 8.5 mils. Eight mils is for San Juan County and point five mils is for Water Commission. The total remaining authority that we have to impose is 3.35 mils. San Juan County's remaining authority is point eight five mils, and Water Commission remaining authority is 2.5 mils. The total estimated remaining property tax revenue would equate to about $13 billion that we could still get. Or not 13 billion, excuse, yeah. Here we go again. So the total assessed value for 22 tax year is going to be about $3.9 billion. So we're hoping that, you know, we don't rely heavily on property tax, but it certainly does help us as a recurring revenue. But our main source that we rely heavily on is GRT. As you well know, that that helps speed, you know, because we have surrounding areas coming in and helping contribute to the GRT tax. So that helps. So we rely more heavily on GRT than we do on on property tax. And we have no general obligation debt. So and we haven't had any general obligation debt in 31 years, 32 years. So it's been a long time. And it just means that we've been very, you know, diligent with our our financial planning and making sure that we're utilizing our recurring revenue dollars wisely. So and then, as I had mentioned before, we are the second lowest county out of all 33 counties with the lowest mill rate. We're coming in behind Eddie County. So with that being said, my presence, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Kim. I think you answered my questions. So I appreciate it. Are there any other questions or comments?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Awesome. Okay, so.
All right. So we need, this is an action item. So I need a motion to approve. Commissioner Sullivan, what was that?
What happened if we just said no? No.
Oh. Saying no? Well, I don't know.
Matt, all right. I think this is one of those statutes where it's just, we're giving our stamp. It's, we don't really have a choice. It's, I think they'd override us and probably issue some kind of order forcing us to enact them.
Right. We're simply sending it to the. Yeah. Okay, so that answers that. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to order the county assessor to impose the 2022 property tax rate.
Hey, I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Mr. Stark, next, we have the boards and committee appointments to Val- Valuation Board.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Per New Mexico Statute 7-38-25, the county commission shall appoint two of the three members to the County Valuation Protest Board for purposes of hearing and deciding protests of determination made by county assessors and protested under a statute. One member to the board must have demonstrated experience in the field of valuation of property and and the other a qualified elector. Currently, we have two individuals, Mr. Sam Todd and Mr. James Gibson, who serve on the protest board. However, in order to have two members present for a for a protest hearing, staff recommends that we appoint three other additional qualified members so that when time comes, we we have folks able to participate. And so I want to thank Brenda for her help in in putting, bringing some folks forth for us to consider. We were able to find three additional qualified candidates for consideration by the commission, Mr. Paul Berry, Ms. Liz Defoea, and Ms. Alana Ambrose. And they all are in the are realtors. So they certainly meet the qualifications. And and all, and more importantly, they're all willing to serve. That's probably the biggest qualification. So staff directs our direction from the commission on filling the vacant valuation protest board seats with the three individuals that we brought forth to you tonight.
Thank you. With that, this is an action item.
It is.
So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve appointment of the three new valuation protest board members.
I have a second. Okay, I have a first and second. Are there any other points of discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we have report from the county manager.
Yeah, thank you. Brief report tonight, just a reminder, again, we've talked about it a lot, but the time is finally here for the mission of mercy. And I want to thank all of our staff who have assisted in making this event a reality, the largest charitable event in the in the state. It's going to happen Friday and Saturday at McGee Park. You know, we we volunteer shifts in terms of being able to, you know, apply online. They've they've ceased that process, but volunteers are still being requested. They can show up the day of the event, essentially 5:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. would be the the times that would be worthy of showing up on Friday and Saturday if folks want to attend. We hope that we get a lot of patients, that they're hoping to serve 1,000 folks in our community that are native of dental care for, you know, variety of reasons. And oftentimes, it's the ability to afford such care. So looking forward to that event this weekend. Freight Rail Information Meetings. I want to thank our chair for for attending one of those meetings and Commissioner Totacini out in Chip Rock. And we had great attendance at at both meetings. And, you know, we, of course, this is just the start of the process, but we wanted to gather feedback from from citizens at large and and make, like I said, it was great representation from, you know, folks that live in the county, folks that are on the Navajo Nation. I mean, just a really good, broad group of folks that participated. I've got in front of you some postcards that would, you know, say stay in touch and how and how you can keep in touch with activities and progress through the project dedicated website at the number four corner's freightrail.com site. And so you'll see a lot of information out there. We shared that with folks at the meeting. The MOU that we have with the Navajo Nation, the previous studies that have been done on this project and desire to bring a freight rail line up from the I-40 corridor. And so just want to make sure you're aware of it. And then also, you know, we've got folks that have signed up to be on our mailing list. And and we received, as of Monday, we had 16 comments provided through the website already. So folks are already interacting with the website and and providing feedback that way. But the grant expires October of of 2024. That's when we have to meet all the deliverables that are part of our grant agreement with the Federal Railroad Administration. That's what we we laid out at the information meetings. And and we're well on our way to to starting down that road of putting together all the different documents and graphs and charts and and data that we're going to need to show that it's it's economically viable and then some proposed routes for for folks to consider. So we'll circle back at a later date as we start making more progress, but certainly want want citizens to know how they can keep in touch with this project. Certainly a great amount of interest in in doing that, so.
This is excellent. I'm glad to see this. I've had several comments, questions. There was an article in the newspaper that I made reference to, but this is really good for people that weren't able to attend the meetings, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
You bet.
They went very well.
Absolutely. And and last but not least, I'd like to introduce a new hire to you. Commissioner Totacini mentioned former students, specifically Chief Noon. We have a former student of Commissioner Lanier that's joining our team here at San Juan County that I'd like to have come up, Porter Smith, who is a, kind of serving the role as project manager. As you know, we've been fortunate recipients of lots of grants, which means lots of projects. And in fact, we were starting, Mr. Cox and I going through the list of projects, and we couldn't even get through it today. We have to go to part two tomorrow. So because that's how successful we've been in finding grant dollars. So we couldn't have Mr. Smith join our team, couldn't couldn't happen at a better time. And just want to introduce him to the commission and allow him to introduce himself to the commission.
Welcome. Madam Chair, Commissioners, name is Porter Smith. Born and raised right here, born in Durango, actually, and raised in Aztec my whole life. Graduated Aztec High School in 2003. Had Commissioner Lanier as a history teacher.
History, okay.
My grandfather actually served as a commissioner here from 85 to 88, Robert Smith. After high school, got an engineering degree down at New Mexico Tech in Socorro and worked here in the basin, oil and gas, worked for P&amp;M at the San Juan Generating Station. Chased race cars around for several years in Ohio and North Carolina and all over the place. And but excited to be back here, back home, back where I was raised. Me and my wife, we have a family now and excited to be a part of the county and sort of giving back and just being a part of of going forward and and building a stronger community.
Thank you and welcome as part of the team. So I know it's going to be a huge help to what has been what I've seen in the last year and a half or so that's needed. So thank you for coming. Have anything else to add to that?
I would just add that he's an exceptional person. He was an awesome student, and he is going to be a great addition to the county. I I feel sorry for Mike and and Jim, they're they're going to have to play catch up with you.
I appreciate the time.
He's very, very sharp, very, very sharp.
Appreciate it, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of my report tonight. Thank you. Wow. I told you it was a very brief report. That usually means. Yeah, 10 minutes.
All right. Do we have any reports from elected officials or department gets? All right, do we have any reports from elected officials or department gets? Hearing none, then at this time is comments and input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects that the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Do we have anyone that would like to step forward to the microphone? Hello, please identify yourself.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Linda Corwin. I live in Bloomfield, and I just wanted to give you a quick update to my complaint at our, your last meeting. After the meeting was over, I did talk to Sheriff's Deputy, and they had the Code Enforcement Department and the Assistant Fire Chief. After that, I went to the next Bloomfield City Council meeting and talked to Police Chief Francisco and Fire Chief Moller. And I convinced them, didn't take very much work, but I convinced them that a Bloomfield cop can get to our site a lot quicker than trying to find a sheriff to get out there. And so he agreed that we could call him first if we see anything weird going on out there or smell anything. And I think everybody now is on the same page because I have not smelled any of that noxious burning stuff anymore, and things seem to be very quiet out there. So I really appreciate everybody's effort and hope we can keep on them and get that situation taken care of.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, and are you?
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Madeline Smith, I live in Masonzana.
Yes, I spoke to you.
Yes, yes, I spoke to you.
Okay.
This is in regard to, I know we don't have a weed ordinance in the county, but I'm having just major problems with a property that's behind me, it's a field, and the weeds are all growing into my fence line. And I, and ants, there's just a, I'm overwhelmed or inundated with ants, and I'm spending a lot of my own money, and I can't, I can't get those people back there to take care of the weeds or ants. And I've just spent a substantial amount of money trying to fight the, the whole thing back there. Now I have, I believe I have either gophers or prairie dogs in the yard. So I think we talked about that also.
We did.
Yeah. So anyway, I, can we, is there anything that we can do maybe to, to get that fellow to, those people back there to mow and, or cut down weeds or?
Mr. Stark preserves somebody that she can talk with.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Ms. Smith, we, we could certainly send out our code compliance officer, but, but as Ms. Smith indicated, and I think you all know, we, we do lack the enforcement mechanism via ordinance to really, could have a, certainly a, a conversation with the property owner, talking about, you know, the concerns that you've relayed to us and that, you know, it'd be strongly recommended to, you know, be a good neighbor and help out with trimming your weeds and throwing a little ant killer down if, if that would help kind of subside the problem. So we could certainly, could, could do that, most definitely. But I, I wouldn't want to say that, you know, if we get a, a door in the face, which could certainly be the possibility, that we wouldn't be able to do much beyond just having that conversation with your, your neighbor next door, which I, I don't know, Ms. Smith, we talked a couple of days ago, I think you've spoken to him once, is that correct?
Oh, years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not recent?
No, no, not, no, not them.
Oh, okay.
No, I, and you know, he's on the water board now, but that's the, another small little problem we're having here, too. We, we think maybe, my neighbor and I are not using our irrigation water now because it, it starts smelling like sewage. You know, we're all on septic tanks out there, and that's, that's another thing, is there, is just there any way we can get on a city sewage line out in Masonzana instead of having these septic tanks?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, and Ms. Smith, you know, Masonzana today is, you'd have to help me, how many miles from the town limits of Bloomfield?
Oh.
Five or six miles?
Sure, couple, I'm, I'm not really sure.
And, and so that would probably be the best bet for something like that. Of course, you know, we've looked at other areas in the county to look at what would, you know, if it's feasible to, to, to run sewer out to a, an area. We've, we've had some success in Kirtland. Of course, we have a project in Farmington, it's certainly something that could be, you know, probably best, best situation would be to, to request legislative funding to look at, you know, potential preliminary engineering report. But, but we probably want to have confirmation regarding failing septic systems. I know Ms. Smith and I spoke that, you know, the Mexico Environment Department, which has a local office here, is the best group to have, have them come out and evaluate. I don't know if you reached out to me after our conversation?
They, they, they transferred me to somebody, a watershed.
Oh, the San Juan Watershed Group?
Yeah, and then I called them, and it was a disconnected number, so.
Okay.
I'm not getting very far.
Well, I, Ms. Smith, I'd be happy to follow up with NMED, that's under their purview, if there's a concern regarding a septic tank that's failing. They would at least need to investigate to determine whether or not that's, that's the case or not. And so we, we'd be happy to, I'd be happy to follow up for you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other comments to be brought before the commission?
Amanda Knight, I'm back as well. From last week, I was disappointed as I looked at the agenda and noticed that ordinance 10 has not come up as something that you guys are going to take a look at. So I just wanted you to know that I'm here and I'm monitoring this because I need to speak for my dog, who is now sick. I have three dogs at home with a kennel cough so bad that I have to have medication for them now, because when they start coughing with that kennel cough, they almost can't catch their breath. And that's because they got quarantined at the animal shelter. So with having ordinance 10 3.6 left open to interpretation by the sheriff's office by whether or not a dog should be quarantined at the animal shelter, I've now dealt with multiple medical bills, multiple vet bills trying to solve this issue. I polled DOH, what they recommend as far as identifying a rabid animal, and in fact, the first statement says rabies that are quarantined is not recommended in New Mexico for animals that are dogs or cats because they are not a concern of being rabid. So DOH also says you shouldn't be quarantining them in an animal shelter. The county sheriff did release finally the documents to me, and their policies say unvaccinated animals are the only ones that should be going into the shelter to quarantine. And my dog was still taken and needed to quarantine at the animal shelter that was full, and now he has kennel cough diagnosed, and so do all of my other dogs. So I just wanted you to know, I'm still watching that, I still have people asking me, how's that going? And I just think that given the local areas around here don't follow that same path, it would be good for that ordinance to change.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other comments from the public? All right. Anything else from any of the commissioners? All right, with that, then we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.